Good evening. I will call this meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Salem for Monday, February 8th, 2021 to order. If the recorder will please call the roll.
Commissioner Stapleton? I see her, but I don't hear her.
I didn't either.
Commissioner Anderson?
I didn't hear her either, but I'm here just like she is.
Okay. Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Commissioner Leung? I'll swing back around there. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Chair Hoy?
Here, as is my barking dog. I apologize.
Commissioner Nordike?
That's perfect timing. When's my dog chiming in? I'm here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
And we'll go back to Commissioner Leung? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item on our agenda tonight is the election of a vice chair, councillor or Commissioner Phillips. Do you have a nomination?
Thank you, Chair Hoy. Yes, I'm honored to nominate Commissioner Virginia Stapleton.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, will the recorder please call the roll?
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner Leung? Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordike?
Hi.
Commissioner Lewis?
Hi.
And Commissioner Stapleton? Still can't hear you, but Chair Hoy?
Hi, and Commissioner Stapleton, I believe your computer is on, the speaker on your computer is off from when we were talking on the phone a few minutes ago. So not on your Zoom, but on your computer. We'll move on, sorry. All right, I am going to need somebody to pinch hit on the consent calendar. We have no public comment. Would, let's see, Commissioner Lewis, would you like to move the consent calendar with a reminder at 3.3, 3.3A has been pulled by you?
Yes, I moved passage of the Housing Authority Consent Calendar with item 3.3A being pulled by councillor Lewis, or member Lewis.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion councillor Lewis, would you like to go over it?
The only thing that's on it now is the minutes from the January 25th Housing Authority meeting.
Any further discussion? Will the recorder please call the roll?
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner Leung? Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordike?
Hi.
Commissioner Lewis?
Hi.
Commissioner Stapleton, if you nod, I'll, oh, great. Commissioner Anderson?
Thumbs up.
Chair Hoy?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Lewis, for pinch hitting. I see that we have no public hearings and no special orders of business and no information reports. We are adjourned.
Nope, nope, nope.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You do have a special order of business. We have item 3.3A that Commissioner Lewis pulled.
Correct. So I'll, I'll make this easy. I move staff recommendation on agenda, item 3.3A.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I think we have a move into second for 3.3. Thank you for the save, Commissioner Lewis. Go ahead.
I'll be real quick. And Nicole, I think, I think this question would be for you. Sequoia Crossing, do you have an estimate of the completion date?
The actual completion is going to be dependent. We will be coming back to you here in the next month for our application processes for the permanent supportive housing funds and the 9% tax credit grant applications, NOFS, that are currently open. Our goal is to be successful in those and hopefully close this in the spring of 2022. And all of our projects have run about anywhere from 12 to 15 months for actual completion date.
Okay, so everything goes great. We, we see these occupied two plus years from now.
That's very hopeful. Yes, we're hoping that's the case and they should be completed early of 2023.
Okay, I guess I've got a comment that I think will end in a question. In 2009, the, the previous place was demolished, or the order to demolish it happened to hold the property for, for future housing needs. It's, it's now 12 years later. The housing needs have been around for a number of years. I, I just, I've seen this before. I, I just wish that we could do, and here's the question, is there anything outside of funding, is there anything that we can do to speed up this kind of process?
I, I don't believe that we can speed up the process for developing a whole another complex of 75 units due to all of the due diligence that's required to close these projects as well as the grant cycles and grant funding applications. This one, we are quickly trying to expedite it as quick as possible with doing dual application processes at the same time instead of waiting to see if one is successful and then going the next year to the, to the following one. We're actually going to apply for both in the same year and the same cycle in hopes that if we're not successful on one, we may be as successful on the others to keep this project rolling and moving. We do know that the need is there. And I do recognize that it was demolished in 2009 and this parcel has been vacant. And our goal is to assess any potential vacant land and try to make it a useful, affordable housing site for Salem Housing Authority.
Well, I, last comment, I, I want to thank you for all you do. I think the work is excellent. I just wish that overall the process could be a little quicker. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? I don't see any. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Commissioner Leung? Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordike?
Hi.
Commissioner Lewis?
Hi.
Commissioner Stapleton?
Hi.
Oh, great, I can hear you. Commissioner Anderson?
Hi.
Commissioner Phillips?
Hi.
Chair Hoy?
Hi. Motion passes unanimously. And for staff's benefit, Commissioner Leung has been in contact with me. She has been here. Apparently, we have not been able to hear her at all. So she, I recommended that she log out and log back in. She's trying that now and hopefully will be back soon. It seemed to have worked for Commissioner Stapleton. So with that being said, we are adjourned.
As councillor Leung arrived yet? Newell Agency for Monday, February 8th. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Board Member Stapleton?
Here.
Board Member Anderson?
Present.
Board Member Phillips?
Here.
Board Member Leung?
Here.
Board Member Gonzalez?
Here.
Board Member Hoy?
Here.
Board Member Nordike?
Here.
Board Member Lewis?
Here.
Chair Bennett?
Here. Um. Do you have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No.
Okay. I don't have anyone signed up for public comment, I don't believe. So we'll go to the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar?
Second.
Second by Lewis?
We have item 3.1A, January 25th, 2021 Draft Urban Renewal Agency Amendments, item 3.2A, which is a minor amendment to the jury apartments TIF district plan. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, well, recorder please call the roll.
Board Member Anderson?
Hi.
Board Member Phillips?
Hi.
Board Member Leung?
Hi.
Board Member Gonzalez?
Hi.
Board Member Hoy?
Hi.
Board Member Nordike?
Hi.
Board Member Lewis?
Hi.
Board Member Stapleton?
Hi.
Chair Bennett?
Hi. Motion passes. And I don't believe we have any further business, so we are adjourned. And I'll call to order the meeting of the, pardon me, Salem City Council for Monday, February 8th. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Councillor Stapleton?
Here.
Councillor Anderson?
Likewise.
Councillor Phillips?
Here.
Councillor Leung?
Here.
Councillor Gonzalez?
Here.
Councillor Hoy?
Here.
Councillor Nordike?
Here.
Councillor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Bennett?
Here. Hey, do we have any additions or deletions?
Yes, I move approval of additions and deletions to the agenda.
Second.
Second by Lewis?
Well, that's item 3.3A, I'm sorry, 3.3E, which is a new report on priority bills from the Legislative Committee, and 5A, which is a revised City Council Committee assignment list.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, if you'd please call the roll.
Councillor Nordike?
Hi.
Councillor Lewis?
Hi.
Councillor Stapleton?
Hi.
Councillor Anderson?
Hi.
Councillor Phillips?
Hi.
Councillor Leung?
Hi.
Councillor Gonzalez?
Here, hi.
Councillor Hoy?
Hi.
Mayor Bennett?
Hi. And we'll go then to council comment. Anybody? Councillor Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. I think like, you know, each couple of weeks, we get the opportunity to talk for about three minutes. And last night, as I was walking off my shift at about 3:00 AM in the morning from the hospital, I didn't know that I'd have anything to say. And lo and behold, you know, another day goes by. So just briefly, I guess because of my background as a doctor, I'm going to focus a lot on COVID-19. I want to take the time to thank, you know, the Salem Hospital, Oregon National Guard, and the local agencies and state fairground for again, standing up that vaccine clinic. I got the opportunity to tour that with councillor Lewis and councillor Stapleton back last month. It's really like a phenomenal endeavor that we've done by acting together as a community. And in large part, that's the reason why Oregon is doing better than the national average in terms of percent of people vaccinated. So, you know, again, we have two safe and effective vaccines for COVID-19. I mean, I think I share our community's frustration that there remains, you know, scarcity in terms of getting the COVID-19 vaccine. But in some part, you know, we're a victim of our own success. We've done such a good job of getting the people in the first few tiers vaccinated and then things happen, you know, outside of our control. But that just got me thinking about, you know, what we've all lived through in the past year. And this may be a bit morbid, but I, I think, you know, I agree with our now President Biden, what he said the night before his inauguration. To heal, we have to remember. And 2020 was the deadliest year for people in the United States of America of any year we've ever had. We had over 300, over 3.2 million deaths, which was over 400,000 more deaths than the year before. It's the largest percent increase in deaths since World War I. You have to go back to 1918 before you see something like this. So that doesn't just go away. It's going to take time and continued efforts on all of us to do everything that it takes to continue to see success. We've crossed over a few mountains in terms of like increased rates of transmission of the disease and increased number of cases, but we're still on the side of a mountain. We've come down off the peak, but that's because we're doing literally everything possible. So, you know, keep wearing masks, keep social distancing, and when it's your turn, get a vaccine. Now, it's from this that I want to jump off and just use this time that I have to encourage all of us to reach out to every level of government to do more. What we're facing in terms of a national and local health crisis is unprecedented in any of our lifetimes. You know, this is not a moment for inaction. We need a COVID-19 rescue plan that meets the magnitude of the need at this time, both in terms of healthcare and the economic damage that's been done. So it's my opinion that bigger is better. And I hope that as a city, you know, we can reach out and advocate for that in terms of adequately meeting the needs and getting the funds that we need to get everybody safe as possible in these times. So again, to heal, we have to remember and then learn and act. I thank you for the time to speak tonight.
Thank you. Councillor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to thank councillor Phillips for his voice and his leadership on this issue. You know, I mentioned a few months ago that I lost a family member to COVID. Last week, I lost a former coworker. Yeah, an HR professional that I worked with in Clackamas County passed away last week. And so, and I've had five or six cousins that have had it, but luckily have recovered. So it's very close to home. And his words ring true for me, and I really appreciate it and appreciate his leadership. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Leung, do you want to speak? Yeah, that article in the paper this weekend was quite good. I wonder if you wanted to talk about that at all during the?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, Dr. Councillor Phillips, thank you for again highlighting the work that you're doing within the community. I had mentioned at the last city council meeting that my uncle, clan leader, had passed away from COVID. His funeral was actually about a week ago. And there was an article that was released in The Statesman recently that talked about some of the work that my organization, Micronesian Under Committee, has been doing and how COVID has affected the Micronesian Pacific Under Community, one of the hardest. And we're continuing to see a number of people who are still sick and a number of people who are still dying. There's been cases of individuals that my organization has supported with some resources. And then next thing you know, we hear that they've died. And we're also hearing about a total number of people who, they, they survived, but now they're living with long-term health consequences. And if anything, this is just a reminder that yes, it's been almost a year since COVID came and it's still not going away. And it's dangerous, especially for a lot of community members. So please take it seriously. Please wear a mask. And if you can, just, you know, so, social distance where you can, because this is a really dangerous disease and is affecting a lot of people, even though you may not, you may not personally know somebody. There are people who are dying and there are people who are hurt and there are people who are sick.
Thank you, councillor, very much. Okay, councillor Nordike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I wanted to share a few updates, among other things, since we're on the subject of COVID, I would just remind folks how many different organizations are impacted by COVID. And that includes a lot of our nonprofits in the community. Over the weekend, I toured the Home Youth and Resources Center, which is our drop-in day center available for homeless youth, at-risk youth, and any other youth, frankly, throughout the Salem Kaiser School District area. And like a lot of nonprofits, I was able to see how COVID has impacted them firsthand. Normally, we'll have a spot for our youth to gather, where they can get help with homework, where they can do arts and crafts, where they can benefit from access to healthy role models from the trained staff through, available through Community Action Center. And all of these services are impacted by COVID because we can only have so many youth in the day center at a time. The day center is a place of safety, positivity, and a place to really help youth learn how to prepare for adulthood. This is a place where they can, for example, learn how to cook for themselves and how to cook for others, learn the social skills that you need to apply for jobs, get help with homework assignments, and so on. And I very much appreciate the staff for giving me a tour of this facility on Sunday morning. And they were able to show me firsthand how they've had to downsize their operations temporarily because of social distancing and other COVID restrictions. I was also concerned to hear them discuss the fact that sex trafficking is very much the reality for at-risk youth in our community. And so I will be looking a little more into that in the months to come. Another tour that I did this weekend is I, first, I visited Church of the Park, checked in with our community partners there. Most of you probably already know what Church of the Park is. They do a lot of work with persons who are experiencing homelessness in the community, particularly at Cascade Gateway Park, where the church is located, but they provide services beyond that. When I saw them on Friday, it was, I helped load up food donations because thanks to the city and the Church of the Park and Arches and other folks, we now have a temporary shelter for about 100 unsheltered persons at the Oregon State Fairgrounds Pavilion. So I loaded up my car with all kinds of dried goods that we could take to the fairgrounds. They are accepting donations there. And I encourage anyone, if you are interested in donating items, the Church of the Park maintains an active list of things that they can accept. After I loaded up my car with things like snacks, dried apple cider packets, coffee, and so on, I took it to the Fairgrounds Pavilion. And there, I dropped off all those deliveries and toured the facility with DJ Vincent of that, of Church of the Park. And we also met two special guests, Larry McCool and his therapy llama, Caesar the No Drama Lama. That's right, the No Drama Lama. I invited Larry and his llama, who is world famous, you can Google him, but he is indeed a therapy animal. And he brings positivity and joy and just a soothing presence wherever he goes. And we were able to escort the llama around the various tents in the area that were at the shelter and just have an opportunity to look our homeless persons in the eye, which is an important point because a lot of people who are homeless will tell you that some people just refuse to make eye contact with them. And that is a small but important way in which people who are unsheltered are often dehumanized. So this was an opportunity for us to lead a therapy around, to look people in the eyes, smile, say some encouraging words, and find out more about them. This shelter, as the city announced through its press releases, is already at capacity 24 hours after opening, which is extraordinary. This just goes to show the profound need for shelter, especially during our winter months. I can tell you anecdotally that this shelter has drawn folks who are living on the street into this shelter from several hotspots in town, Walls Marine Park, Cascade Gateway Park, the Market Street area, and the downtown area. Thanks to this partnership between the city, Church of the Park, Community Action Agency, and all the local businesses who are providing food free of charge, out of the goodness of their hearts, who are unsheltered and the staff and the volunteers, we have 100 fewer people on the streets. So I really want to applaud Gretchen Bennett and everyone else who made this happen. It is 100 people. We have several hundred more to go. But for these 100 individuals, this is a real game changer. Because this is not only a safe and dry place to stay at night, they will also be matched with case management services. So it is my hope that these folks can stabilize and transition from a temporary shelter into transitional housing. This is about giving opportunities to people to become more self-sustaining and to really just basically rebuild their lives through the support that we've given them here. Another comment I would make is that the facility was absolutely spotless. It was, it was well-staffed. There was a security presence. There were showers on, onsite. And it was just a wonderful facility, which I'm really excited about as a temporary shelter for these folks. And I point that out because private business owners, I'm looking at you, if you have a pri, if you have a warehouse in town, if you have an empty building right now, please consider leasing it for the purposes of a temporary shelter. Because I can tell you that this program is working very well right now. And I know that there have spent a lot of fears about the notion of opening your doors to even a few homeless persons to do a car camping program in your parking lot. Well, this program thus far has been extremely successful and is already serving the community. So I just encourage folks to keep that in mind because the need is great. And the government cannot solve this alone. We just don't have the funds to independently solve this as a city. So we need your support. And I bet if you are interested in helping out, we can find a way. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Comments on two items, both of which are on the agenda. First one is the resolution that the mayor is going to read in a few moments about the Black History Month. I just have to say that this is, it's a very good thing, but I think we, all of us as Oregonians should recognize that we have a shameful sordid history of racism in this state, not just against black people, but against all people of colors, Native American, Hispanics, all people of color. And I think that this council resolution, plus the two resolutions we passed a couple of meetings ago, are good starts to moving our city and our state forward where all people can be celebrated and treated equally. So I thank you for this resolution. Second thing relates to item 3.3A, which I, I didn't pull, and I don't know if anybody did pull. It's the, it's the intergovernmental agreement with Marion County on the Corden Kubler Corridor. I'm in favor of that, but I think we also ought to recognize as a city that we right now are moving forward with the Climate Action Task Force to come up with a climate action plan. 53% of the greenhouse gas emissions in our city come from transportation, mostly from single occupancy vehicles. So I'm not sure that the county, I'm pretty sure that the county doesn't have a climate action plan, but I would ask that the, the city staff who is working with the county staff in the intergovernmental agreement, keep in mind that the goals of our climate action plan, which is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And I think that should be something we should consider when we're looking at a four-lane road and turn lanes and all the sorts of bigger expansions to make it quicker and easier for cars to travel in our, in our cities. So I would like the staff to really look at this as they deal with the county staffs. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councillor Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. Buenas tardes. ¿Díjeme, pe, José González? You know, it's a trilingual greeting. I wanted to use my high school French, but also I'm going to try to do a little intro in one of the multiple languages, dozens and dozens spoken here, just so we're always aware of that. But really just two items. The first one is regarding the, the homeless encampment around the Marcus Street I-5. And, you know, since a lot of people don't really know that that's, belongs, technically belongs to the state, I've been catching myself making excuses about it, like it's somebody else's, I just caught myself at, that's sort of what I've been going to. And I just wanted us to maybe do a few things as a council. One is, you know, make sure we're on the same page. And we also reach out to our state representatives. Several of them touch our zones, are connected to these areas that are, apart from the Marcus Street I-5 access, it's the Parkway, you know, and these are, these things are changing rapidly. And I think our, our delayed response is what, is where we're hearing the, our community respond. And I would say here are the following reps, because I think not just us as councillors, but the community, if we can all get on the same page and work together. And my request to them is just going to be how I can help, how we can help. But for example, on the district side, we have District 10, Deb Patterson, 11 is Peter Courtney, 13 is Kim Thatcher. On the state rep side, District 19 is Raquel Moore Green, 20 is Paul Evans, 21 is Brian Clam, 22 is Terence Alonso Leon, and 25 Bill Post. But I think if we all work together, you know, we can at least, I think it'll be, at least be a good first step, you know, because we're all in this together. And the other thing that I like to mention too, because I catch myself having to explain this, is that city council has no real authority over the school board, the schools. They have their own board. And I have, first of all, I have no interest or desire to get involved in their decisions. But one thing I realized is that our work intersects just a little too much for us to keep working the way we've been working. And for example, one area is our parks. And right here, actually, my neighborhood, in front of Washington Elementary. they brought this huge apartment complex. It's being built. And you know, even though this area has older homes which have larger yards than normal, so kids and families have a space for themselves and for their pets. Well, now we have a neighbor, a huge complex where the kids in that complex won't have those green spaces. And even though we're, there's a couple of parks within walking distance. For example, there is no dog park, you know, um. And schools really, the only tools they really have available are are there to reach the school age kids. Uh, but we have the ability to reach out to their neighbors and to the surrounding communities. Um, for example, if we would have had a little better coordination, then maybe we could have figured out a way to bring all these kids free wifi, bring our community wifi. Because now um even our seniors today, talking about things that are just changing on a daily basis, uh our seniors aren't able to easily access the vaccine because they're sent online to do it. You know, so just to let you know, I've I've already been in conversations with Salem Kaiser's Assistant Superintendent Craig. And I wanted to, I sort of threw it to him to ask him how our decisions, actions we take, how it directly impacts them. I'm also not going to forget about our very important Chimawa Indian School. I'm going to also make sure that we engage with them. And so I'm asking my counselors to keep these schools in mind um to better engage our people in our wards as a first step to taking different kinds of actions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Let's see. Oh, Councilor Stapleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I was hoping to go last because I actually um I had something to kind of direct to the city managers. I'm kind of hoping to get the last call here. Um, but I got this really great thing in the mail today. I don't know if you guys can see this, but I got my water bill in the mail today and and I opened it up and there was this great little flyer that I wanted to remind remind people of. Um, and that is our billing assistance that we have for the Emergency Utility Assistance Program. Um, and we're really need to get the word out on this because um obviously we need, we want to spend this money. We want to help people in this really intense time for all of our families. So I was hoping um that the city manager could kind of give us as council a little update on what's going on with that program. I know we kind of shifted gears recently. Um, and I've been getting some phone calls, been getting some text messages. I'm trying to figure out information on this. And so I was just hopeful that we could use this megaphone to kind of help get the word out and and hear how the program's going, how it's how it's working out for us.
Great, thank you. Hey, Mr. Manager. Would you like to go ahead and give us whatever report you want to, as well as respond to Councilor Stapleton's question?
Yes, thank you. I I would be be happy to. Uh, first on the shelter at the Fairgrounds Pavilion. I want to make sure that, uh, you know, council doesn't neglect itself as far as thanking our our partners. It's really with councils' funding and and policy decisions that you've made, including the Safe Park Program that we have had the successful start to the shelter at the fairgrounds. And certainly in addition to the partners that have already been named, the Oregon State Fair and Exposition Center staff and board were were critical in allowing uh this uh this idea to become reality. I do want to make sure that they're recognized and thanked. And we have seen, as was mentioned, uh, some appropriate move of individuals into a a better setting. And and we want to make sure that continues. In addition, uh, you will recall, I think I've shared this with with you before, uh, with Community Action Agency, with with help from state and federal funders, but primarily through the work of of Gretchen Bennett. Uh, we have uh really added for this winter a a robust hotel program where hotel rooms motel rooms are being used for shelter. And that's really where through the work of the Community Action Agency, our Salem Housing Authority, where we do intake and try to make sure that the appropriate placement is made for people in need, such as the elderly, medically fragile and families. In regards to the uh water system, water billing, as of February second, uh, we have had ten water accounts that have been shut off for non-payment. Uh, pre-COVID, a few years ago, uh, we would have fifty to seventy-five accounts per day. Uh, so I think the fact that we only have ten over the past week is is evidence that we're going slow. And certainly whatever additional information sharing that uh the community can help us with, we certainly, we welcome that. Uh, we have been, as was was shared earlier, we have put inserts repeatedly in the utility billings. Uh, we work closely with three uh nonprofit agencies uh for the the screening of eligibility for financial assistance. And and we are going very slow to make sure that there isn't any any mistake made in the process, any miscommunication, any error made i- in in turning off uh someone's water who, for example, might very well be in the process of of securing financial assistance. And we're going to continue to take that approach. I think as as Director Fernandez shared with council previously, our uh our expectation that that our customers uh would start paying more attention to the delinquent utility accounts would occur as we initiated the shut-off process. And I do want to emphasize process because we are going slow on the actual actual shut-offs. And we'll continue to, and I'll have uh with Peter's help, we'll have a report uh for you here soon as we get a little more uh experience underway uh on the on the resumption of 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 collecting uh past due utility accounts.
Thank you very much, Councilor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just uh wanted to make a comment for the city manager. Um, Councilor Stapleton's visual there reminded me that I hadn't seen that. And so I checked my, I get the my utility bill electronically. So I looked to see if I just had maybe glossed over it and not not noticed it, but I just looked and in fact, that's not included in the electronic billing. So I would maybe encourage their staff to consider including a link or a visual or something to to or at least a narrative about that program for people who get their bills electronically, unless I'm just missing it, which is is possible.
Councilor Stapleton?
Thank you. Um, yeah, and I I actually had a question and maybe this, uh, maybe you can help me out, um, manager. Um, on the program on the flyer, it says eligible households may receive up to five hundred dollars towards their past due utility bills. And I guess maybe um because I kind of just coming into the game here, um, I thought that it was to just take care of any, like if somebody was having financial hardship, that then we would kind of step in and help just alleviate that or or take care of that bill. Um, but really it's it's more a percentage or up to five hundred dollars. Is that correct? I mean, obviously it's correct, but how does that? I guess I'm wondering how I got under the uh the assumption that we were taking care of bills.
Mr. Manager, do you want to respond or could Mr. Fernandez explain?
Yes, I'd call on uh Peter to answer that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. So what council authorized uh last spring is uh uh it used to be that the maximum, I'm trying to recall, I think it was a a hundred dollars or sixty dollars. So we went up to five hundred dollars uh on a twelve-month running uh uh calendar. So once a customer is qualified by one of our three uh agencies, then uh uh their account is credited uh five hundred dollars. And uh uh so so if uh you know, their bill is less than that, then then they'd have several months of uh of of credit to their bill. But but again, it's only for the utility bill. And it's only for people that are that are, these are, these are really for single-family uh home residents that are responsible for their Salem utility bill. And the credit is for the utility bill.
Did you get, did that answer your question?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, we'll uh move on then.
Mr. Mayor, uh, sorry to be labor this point, but I I think it is really important. I'm so glad that um uh, Councilor Stapleton brought it up. I think Jose, uh, Councilor Gonzalez also has a question. And I thank uh city manager Steve Powers and director Peter Fernandez for being here. Um, I I think it it might be helpful. Like I'm I'm also very new to this process, but I appreciate appreciate seeing it in like last month's Budget Committee and elsewhere. So like I'll just try to summarize so that again, for the purpose of communication, my understanding is that because of the COVID nineteen pandemic, uh, previous council, I think it was mentioned last spring, agreed to something like five hundred thousand dollars towards this um that people would apply to to get relief on their water bill so they wouldn't face the shutdown. And it's it's my understanding that people didn't avail themselves of that money because there was no enforcement mechanism. Um, and that, you know, over ninety, roughly ninety percent of the funds have never been utilized. So we've had some change in policy to actually use that money that is, for lack of a better expression, uh siloed in a way. So uh I I I think it's just helpful to communicate that again, big picture. So the community understands there are resources available if you're having trouble with your water bill, but you got to fill out some forms and I'm sure city staff is available to help. Did I do a decent job of summarizing that?
I thought you did.
Okay.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Uh, uh, there are no forms to fill out when when folks call us and uh sometimes uh the kind of help that they need, we can address right away. Something like, hey, I'll I'll be able to pay in two weeks. I'll be able to pay in three weeks. They can just talk to our customer service staff and we can make arrangements for that kind of situation. Uh, for people that are truly struggling, we refer them to one of our three uh partners and it's the partners who qualify them. And as soon as we get the call or the email that they qualify, we just transfer the money. So there there is no paperwork, there is no bureaucracy on on our end. Uh, we have made a choice for decades to not get people's information. We do not want to be in the qualification business or or to have information related to how much they make or what assistance they may be on. That's why we rely on our uh on our partners to do that. These are social service agencies. So so once they're in their system, they can also offer other assistance for other utilities, for food, for rental assistance. So so it's it's a good program that that we work together on the on these things. Uh, I also want to report that as of last Friday, uh, as we have started uh the process of uh of enforcing shut-offs, uh, we've now given away just under seventy thousand dollars. So 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 the program is being utilized. We want to get through, we just started, we just started at the end of January. So we actually delayed. We had told council originally we were going to start in October. Uh, we deliberately delayed a couple of months. One, to give people more opportunity. Second, to make sure that all the processes were were in order and and there wouldn't be any follow-ups. Uh, so we really haven't even gotten a month yet. Once we're a month and a half, two months in, we do intend to come back to council to report on uh how it's going. Uh, there's some things that we would like to propose to council to change, to actually improve things so that more people uh either are eligible or can have access, easier access. So so we're working on all those things and we intend to come back to council real soon.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Councilor Gonzalez, did you want to speak?
Yeah, Mayor, I guess. Yeah, thanks for the information. Uh, and very helpful, answers uh some of the questions. It's really more of a comment now. And based on a rough patch, I went through as a as a family, as a father, and I've been in housing, seeing the sort of the the uh the things that set it get set in motion and the dominoes start falling. One of the first things that really goes is utility bills, water shut-off, heating. Some of these basic services are really the first signs of, it's just, it's a symptom, you know, so I appreciate the patience the city is having. Um, the past Jose thanks you. You know, and so I'm hoping that you can continue this and we'll find a way and we'll back you up if you can help these, keep helping these families.
Right, thank you. Councilor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with all the comments that have been made and I I think it might be appropriate if we could tell the public now, what are the three social service agencies? I know we tell them when they call up the Public Works Department about their bill, but you know, if they know what agencies to go to, maybe they could go directly to them. I know one of them, but I think we need to know all three.
Okay, Peter?
It's Salvation Army, St. Vincent de Paul and Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor.
Okay. All right, we'll uh, did you have your hand up, Councilor Hoy? No, okay. We'll go ahead and move forward to proclamations then. Uh, whereas in February nineteen twenty-six, Dr. Carter Woodson introduced Negro History Week. And in nineteen seventy-six, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of black history throughout America. Whereas Black History Month recognizes and pays tribute to the contributions that African-Americans have made to American history in their struggles for freedom and equality and deepens our understanding of their shared history. And whereas for generations, African-American individuals, families and communities have played a significant role in protesting the necessity for black individuals and families to be viewed and valued as human beings who are respected, dignified and worthy. And whereas the city of Salem acknowledges the historical and modern-day challenges faced by people of African descent, sustained by white supremacy and all its direct and indirect impacts and applications. And whereas the Salem City Council has denounced racism as a systemic issue, creating disparate outcomes in many areas of life, including family stability. On January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, council adopted Resolution twenty twenty-one dash two condemning white supremacy and racism and Resolution twenty twenty-one dash three affirming that racism is a public health uh crisis. And whereas we at the city of Salem commend the many achievements, successes and contributions of African-Americans whose roots begin with a foundation of incredible strength, resilience, creativity and unity. Now therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, to hereby proclaim the month of February twenty twenty-one as Black History Month here in the city of Salem, Oregon, and encourage all residents to join in learning and about and celebrating the contributions of African-American that African-Americans have made to our country, our state and to our community dated this first day of February twenty twenty-one. And we'll be presenting that to Dr. Reginald Richardson, President of the Salem Kaiser NAACP. And I'm not sure if Dr. Richardson is here right now.
Yes.
Is great. There you are. Dr. Richardson, do you want to speak, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, the council. I really appreciate the opportunity. On behalf of the members of the NAACP, we accept this proclamation. We appreciate the sentiments and recognition that is expressed in the proclamation. And also we congratulate the council's work in denouncing racism. And we call on the city to develop a plan to address the institutional racism that exists in our city. And we at the NAACP stand ready to be your partner as you look to do the real work of change for our city and our state. So we thank you for your work. We thank you for the proclamation uh very much.
Thank you, Dr. Richardson. I know we all look forward to uh twenty twenty-one being a year we really have a a fulsome conversation and developing policies that relate to uh the issues you just raised and the ones that we've identified as well. So uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, don't have any, uh, I have only one person signed up for public comment, Shalisoa Cryer. There she is.
Hello. Um, so my name is Shalisoa Cryer. I am in um Ward Three and um so I signed up to comment on Agenda Item five A, uh, which was the twenty twenty-one City Council Committee Assignments. Um, and specifically, I wanted to comment on the assignments for Councilor Leon. Um, I want to thank all of the council members that I reached out to today and were were very responsive uh to the concerns that I expressed. Um, and I was um I please, doesn't sound like the right word, but I'm glad to see um that uh those assignments have been changed and to see that Councilor Leon um has been assigned to the Council Rules Committee. Um, I note however, you know, that she has not been assigned to the other two committees that she requested, um, which was to act as an alternate uh for the Climate Action Committee. Um, and specifically to be assigned to the Board and Commission Appointments Committee. Um, and my view, um, Councilor Leon's appointment to the Board and Commission Appointments Committee is very important. Um.
Why don't we stop the clock here for a minute? We just lost. Courtney, is Ms. Cryer trying to get back in?
Not right now, but she may, she's just dropped off. Maybe she will. Just a moment.
Okay.
Mayor Bennett, may I make a brief comment regarding the proclamation?
Yes.
So I'm, I'm very encouraged to see us, you know, take these continued actions that we started with passing those resolutions last month. It's, it's a little bit redundant what I have to say, but I think it's very important. As I mentioned in my opening comments, you know, that concept that was introduced by our now new president, to heal, we have to remember. And that goes for all of us in government, in our professional lives, in our work and personal lives. You know, in this country, there are 450 years of inequality that have built this uneven playing field. So I think that these steps that we're taking are, are really important and timely. And I, I do think that, you know, representation matters. So I was sleeping during the day today, but I was very happy to wake up and see that Counselor Leon is, is on many more committee assignments. And I appreciate the so far comments from my constituent and friend, Shalisoa Cryer.
Yes. That's great. Okay, I, I'm going to move forward. And we can, we'll, we'll hit 5A and if Ms. Cryer comes back on, we'll give her a minute and a half to comment further if she'd like to, if that's okay with everyone. I, I don't see any reason not to proceed though. So we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I approve of the consent calendar with the exception of Item 3.3B, which has been polled by Counselor Gonzalez.
All right.
Back on.
And then, thank you. That's Anderson's second.
Not yet, Trevor. So that leaves us with Item 3.1A, the 20, January 25th, 2021 Draft City Council Minutes. Item 3.3A, which is a request to create a mid-year project and enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Marion County, excuse me, Marion County to conduct a transportation study and develop a management plan for the Corden Kubler Quarter. Item 3.3C, which is the ratification of the purchase and sale agreement amendment with HD Fowler Company Incorporated. And Item 3.3D, subordination of federal home loan for a single family property. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Very good. Any discussion on these?
Brief comment, Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
So for the first item on the consent agenda beyond the minutes, 3.3A, I appreciated Counselor Anderson's comments regarding the, the traffic study.
We're going to, I believe, was that the one polled?
No.
No, okay.
So this is, and I have no questions for staff. These, I'll try to keep my comments brief. First, I would like to thank City Manager Steve Powers for proactively, you know, soliciting questions from, you know, the city counselors. I would like to thank Director Peter Fernandez for promptly offering to meet with me, but actually facilitating a meeting with city staff Julie Warnicki and Anthony Gamallo regarding this, you know, traffic study and, and inter-agency agreement. Obviously, if you don't know, the corridor that, that's being discussed involves Corden Road and Kubler, and a lot of it is in Ward Three, Southeast Salem. And I, I really appreciate hearing the history of how Mayor Bennett has advocated for improvement to Corden Road, the bridge that goes over Highway 22. I, I've let city staff know that there are many constituents in Ward Three who care a great deal about this currently unsafe bridge. And I, I just want to make the community aware that, you know, it's going to take at least a year, maybe two years to complete this study. And it will take even longer to see like real world changes in our built infrastructure. So I would just like to take this opportunity to make a comment, which is that there's a need to, to look into doing more right now with maybe some creative options regarding that Corden Road overpass going over Highway 22. It's just two car lanes with no median. It's dangerous for pedestrians, kids and bicyclists. And I appreciated some of the brainstorming ideas that Julie Warnicki had. And I just want to take the time to say, I really appreciate staff, you know, answering my questions ahead of time. But this is an issue that, that residents in Ward Three do care a great deal about. And I'm sure the City of Salem at large does as well.
Great, thank you. Anyone else on any of the consent calendar? And if the recorder would please call the roll.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leon?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Okay, we'll, we don't have any public hearings, so we'll go to Special Orders of Business, 5A. This is an information item. Now Ms. Cryer, I think is back. So I'd like to give her a chance to complete her comments. There she is. Sorry about that. I hope that wasn't us dropping you.
No, actually, I might, it was like, right at that time was the moment that one of our, our kids put food in the microwave, which, with the internet.
Oh, that one. Didn't blow the panel. That's the, always the challenge. Go ahead. Go ahead, you have about a minute and a half left. Go ahead.
Oh, yes, I have no idea where it froze, but yes, but I mean, the, the summary point was, I, I think I, I did get out, expressing gratitude for the response that I got from city counselors when I reached out. And also express, expressing my strong advocacy and support for Counselor Leon's assignment to the Board and Commission Appointments Committee, specifically because I believe that her voice is really important there to help really bring to light, you know, inclusion on our boards and commissions. And so I, you know, when we talk about the helpfulness and usefulness of diversity, it's because people bring ideas that other folks may not have thought about as well as connections. And I think Counselor Leon has made great efforts over the years to really reach out to a broad spectrum of our community. And I apologize for repeating myself, but you know, not just color, but people who are differently able and, you know, people across income backgrounds. And so I really think that her voice and her efforts to bring in and make those boards and commissions as diverse as possible is extremely important. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, this is, as I said, this is an information item. I appreciate your comments and certainly I, I want to make very clear, anyone can contact that Boards and Commissions Committee and recruiting for it is one of the real challenges, getting folks to apply for these. So I'll look forward to Counselor Leon assisting us in bringing people to the committee that we can put on these various boards and commissions that we have. We were just, and I really apologize, Counselor Leon, we were way too far down the road for me to go to that committee and to the Legislative Committee and make reassignments and change it. It was just, Counselor Leon and I made contact this morning. I was unaware that she was dissatisfied. I base this on activity over the past year in terms of Counselor Leon's time. And it was probably a mistake, but everyone else on the council has reached out to me or I've had conversations with them and been able to pick up the kinds of things they're interested in. I certainly know now Counselor Leon. So next year we'll, we'll get together. I, I'll hunt you down before you come looking for me. I, but don't, don't be reluctant to participate in any way. You've got rules, performance review of the manager, the finance committee as an alternate as well as the Water Waste Water. And as you can tell from today's, this evening's discussion, I'll tell you, Water Waste Water is a very interesting committee. And I'm sure Counselor Anderson would welcome your comments. I have to limit numbers on these committees because we have quorum requirements or we have requirements under the law. We can't be meeting as a city council. And I can't let too many people from the council be on some of these committees or I end up violating, or you end up, whomever, violating state law or at least appearing to. So we'll let this go. I also find, as you know, people change their minds on what they want to be on and will let me know during the year. And if I see openings, I'll, I'll certainly keep you in mind to go right in. So again, please call me, write me, and I'll be sure to do the same for you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on this? All right. I don't have, oh, wait a minute. Have information reports.
We have a poll from the consent agenda under five.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Counselor Gonzalez, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, and this is 3.3B is regards to the retail, retail lease modifications due to the impacts of COVID-19. This is city owned property that has commercial tenants. And I sort of, there's two things. The first was really regarding.
Sorry to interrupt you, but we need a motion first before we discuss it. Just, you could move staff recommendation.
I move staff recommendation, yeah.
Second by Hoy. Okay, go ahead. Continue, Counselor.
Thank you. The, the first part is the criteria on who these modifications can be made to. And on the, the first two items, it just says if the leasing was forced to close. So all I want to do is I want to add that to say forced to close or has been negatively impacted. Now, because there's a lot of small businesses that aren't, that were sort of left behind. You know, they're, they were dependent on those busy restaurants beside them. They were dependent on some of these businesses that were forced to close. They were dependent on the, especially in downtown, the events we had at the Riverfront Park, you know? So even though they weren't directly asked or forced to close, they were still negatively impacted. So I just want to make sure that we give our city manager enough flexibility to also include them. And then really the second part was just regarding the kind of things he can modify. One of them is outstanding balances and any future amounts owed. And I would say with that having to span on any expensive market analysis kind of reports, but it'd be really nice for them to take into consideration that lease rates are dependent on a lot of things. And one of them is foot traffic. One of them is maybe you're buying anchor, a, a, a large store. There's some reason you're paying that, that per square foot rate. And the way things are going, the way things have been going and the way things will be continuing, at least for this year. I just want the city manager to be aware that today's, the value of this real estate, it's going to, it's changed now based on the activity and traffic of its neighbors, of our lack of events. So I just want to make sure that he's aware of that. And he, because the last thing we need, and I think staff mentioned this, is boarded up businesses. Because it, once again, it's a domino effect. It really is. So whatever we can do to keep these businesses going, these small businesses, I'm in favor for.
Great, thank you very much. Let me see, who am I not seeing here? Anybody? Mr. Manager, did you have anything you want to say about this?
No, certainly. Thank you, Counselor Gonzalez, for, for that, for that discussion. I, I guess I have a question for the city attorney, whether Counselor Gonzalez's comment, if, if council agrees with it, would require a change to the recommendation to add or impacted to after the forced to close section of the recommendation?
In my opinion, I don't think so. I think the, the language in the, the action item is broadened up for, for staff to make that interpretation.
Okay, good.
Certainly, I, I, and Director Rutherford will, will take this as, as that's the, that's the, you know, direction of council. That's the wish of council for us to be, I guess, liberal in, in, in applying that language and not, and not just literally the, someone was forced to close or, 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 yeah, forced to close. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on, sorry, anyone else on this motion? Okay, if the recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leon?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye, motion passes. Okay, now we'll move on to information reports. Anything anyone wants to highlight? Manager, did you have anything you want to highlight?
I do not.
Okay. Anything from the council? All right. That's it then. I don't have any further public comments, so we are adjourned.